Well, good afternoon all. Welcome to the special meeting of Toowoomba Regional Council. This meeting is open to the public and will be live streamed. I would like to thank those of you who are in the room today and acknowledge everyone watching via council's social media channels. I acknowledge the Aboriginal parties whose songlines traverse these lands we meet on today, the Western Waka Waka, Gable and Jarrah peoples, and pay respect to their elders, past, present and emerging, for they hold the knowledge, rich traditions and bold ambitions of Australia's first peoples. Attendance, could I mention the our CEO, Sal Petriceto is present, our GM, Ed Johnson, and the officer relevant to this application is Joe Kirkwood is also present today. In terms of council laws, there is a note, there are no apologies received. We note, I note the leave of absence of the mayor and deputy mayor, councillors Geoff McDonald and Rebecca Von Hoff. No resolution is required. There are no declarations of prescribed interest or declarable interests. To proceed further, I would ask that for a motion that suspended, that standing orders be suspended for item number four. Councillor James O'Shea, councillor Tim McMahon, all those in favour? Carry on. Thank you. The presentation by the officer, I said it was to be Joe, and I think that's still the case? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillors. The report before you considers an application for a preliminary approval, including a variation request to apply the low density residential zone framework over the site. If we turn to attachment four, the subject site spans just short of 84 hectares, is across 10 lots and it's located approximately nine kilometres west of Toowoomba CBD. The land is zoned rural and lies outside of the priority infrastructure area with surrounding land uses, including residential developments to the south and east, warehousing and logistics to the north and rural holdings to the west. If we turn to attachment seven, if councils is minded, a variation approval will override the current rural zoning of the site and future development over the site will be assessed as if it was in the low density residential zone for as long as the approval would be valid. It's important to note that there is no assessable development proposed at this stage and future applications, should this application be approved, future, there will be downstream applications required. An indicative yield based on the low density residential zone applying to the land would be about approximately 11 dwellings per hectare, which is consistent with the averages across this zone type within the Toowoomba LGA. And an indicative structure plan outlines both access, stormwater conveyance, parks and road upgrades for future consideration of council. Turning to attachment eight, the site is owned, is included within the urban footprint of the regional plan, that's the South East Queensland regional plan in this instance, and is earmarked for future urban development. While the site is currently zoned within the rural zone, the strategic documents that are relevant to the assessment identify the site for future residential growth between 2036 and 2050 and council modelling forecast development to occur on this land. The report contemplates implications of bringing forward development earlier than anticipated, noting the growth modelling. However, early development is typically conditionally supported if infrastructure delivery can be managed without adverse impacts on the broader road network and the development represents an orderly and efficient expansion of the affected infrastructure networks, which is the case in this circumstance. If we turn to attachment 10, technical assessments were undertaken for transport, water, wastewater and stormwater networks as the site lies outside of the priority infrastructure area. The technical assessments have confirmed the need for trunk upgrades to transport water and wastewater networks, some of which are already planned to be delivered by council within our capital programming and some of which must be delivered at the cost of the developer. Technical assessments undertaken provide a basis for identifying the required works, delivery schedules and developer responsibilities and that will be subject and formalised within future applications. Just in summarising, I guess despite the zoning conflict, the proposed development aligns with the long term strategic planning and the growth projections, as well as infrastructure capacity and timing for delivery. And a balanced assessment supports a recommendation for approval, subject to conditions that impose requirements for downstream applications over this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. I, before asking questions from councillors, I did submit a short list to, to the general manager, would ask him to address those, those issues, please.
Thank you Chair, and through you, with reference to costings for water and wastewater, they are calculated at today's price and they would be recalculated in accordance with PPI when future applications for subdivisions are assessed. At this point in time, the main interest is understanding and ensuring that we've got certainty around the trunk infrastructure augmentations required, where that certainty can be provided. And that is particularly the case for the water and wastewater network, where our, our planning goes out decades in that space. And we have very good understanding across that asset class for what those upgrades may look like and when they're triggered, as well as council's own investment within that. I guess that does contrast against the transport and park infrastructure networks. As we saw yesterday, there's a, there's a fairly significant intersection there with Jubal Road and Toowoomba Wellcamp Road. That is a very complicated intersection and what the proposed conditions and the, and the assessment regime before council at the moment allows for is those detailed studies to take place across a number of stakeholder parties. And the requirement for delivery of that intersection will be determined through that exercise, notwithstanding the fact that this development, if it does take place in advance or outside of those studies, would be required to carry out that upgrade on the basis of the traffic demands and the, and the level of transport movement within this area. In terms of the costs for, for council to prepare this report, it's an interesting one. We don't actually cost report preparations, but what we have done for this application is, it is quite a detailed assessment and there's been a huge amount of work and I'll thank the officers for their work that they've put forward and the detailed and considerate, considered assessment. We charge a cost recovery fee and the cost recovery fee for the application in this instance was $56,217, which is, which is a core, calculated in accordance with the regulatory requirements under the Planning Act for Cost Recovery for the service. This application in terms of, sorry, the land not being within the PIA, where there, where there are other considerations currently being reviewed by officers and not yet before council in terms of development outside of the PIA. What I, what I would say is where there's an orderly, logical and costed and well understood assessment of infrastructure networks that can occur to facilitate development beyond what we would have ordinarily contemplated, if there's a, if it works and if we have certainty around what that looks like and the appropriate little level of control through conditioning, extra payment conditions and the like, it is a very good development outcome and something that's not precluded and in fact, in some cases quite common for councils across the state to, to approve development outside of the PIA where there can be relevant certainty on networks. What I would say is this is by and large an extension of existing urban networks with augmentations required downstream. The council has very strong certainty for what they're, what they are, particularly around water and wastewater. The transport networks are as they are and as you saw yesterday, the park network is very much one that can be controlled as part of detailed design rolls through and within the structure plan before council. I think there are three parks identified as being provided and we would expect that to take place. There are other developments outside of the PIA that require significant investment from either the state in terms of raw water, raw water distribution across the SEQ network, as well as treatment plants as preconditions for development to take place. And then the infrastructure then needs to be taken out to those areas. So there is a very clear distinction between every application and we assess every application on their merits on that basis. I think that's everything I had to say. Sorry. Thank you councillor.
Thank you for that. I take it the, the cost for the water and base that might have been estimated, that have been estimated to date and, and necessarily the cost for the roadwork is something that would be undertaken in the event of a development application coming forward. Okay. Any further questions? Councillor Bill? Carol?
Thanks Chair, too if I might. So notwithstanding your explanation there, Ed, is, is the short answer for my comprehension, that the timing and sequencing of this is ahead of its time, being outside the PIA and therefore the develop, the developer will be contributing, bring forward costs where appropriate?
That's a, that's a great way to summarise it, yes. The conditions, conditions from six through to 17, talk to that very concept.
Okay. And my second question is, just so, are we clear that under the stage development, there tends to be a, a, a pattern that emerges with some around developing the parcel of land in small lot stages. And then the claim is that there is minimal impact to council providing the necessary infrastructure and networks. And therefore it becomes a moot point, possibly litigate, litigation later on around, well, yes, we're going to provide it anyway. So how, how in this application is that taken into account? So we don't run into the, because this is a big parcel of land and no doubt will have many stages.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question councillor and through you Mr Chair. The nature of this application and if councils minded approval is such that should further applications take place on this site, it is, they are required to be assessed against the provisions and the conditions within. And I'll, I'll take you to, to that very point, condition 16, which is that future development under this variation approval requires that infrastructure upgrade works and augmentations be undertaken to council's reticulated waste network. And then it steps out some very significant upgrades within that. Now regardless of whether it's one lot, 10 lots, 200 or 1700, that requirement sits. And as that upgrade threshold trigger is met, there is a requirement to do that. So there is real benefit and I'll commend the applicant for, for coming on board with us on this, to provide us that level of detail and work very closely with the officers to, to actually step out and understand, well, what, what are these augmentations required within the network and where might those be required? So that we can then require that through conditioning and downstream applications to actually be considered within the holistic impact, which is exactly what the issue here is of the entire development taking place regardless of the individual stage.
Councillor Carol?
Thank you Mr Chair, and I know it's mentioned, I'm just, my concerns around stormwater and the detention basin and perhaps it's shown here on, I think it's attachment nine, is it, or seven, or whatever it is. It's that, I, I know the answer to this, I know it's said, but I just want it confirmed. That will be decided and when, and when and if an application comes in?
You're, you're dead right councillor. Condition 11 requires that all future development within this area must be conveyed to a lawful point of discharge and the typical stormwater discharge regime requirements would apply around worsening.
Yeah, page two of two, I think it's, Southeast Queensland. Thank you. So the size of that and, but that will be where it is. So the size of that will be decided when, when an application comes in. Thank you very much.
Councillor Thakwa?
Thank you Chair, thank you GM Ed. Just referring to attachment seven, which we had up on screen earlier, and the realignment of Jubal Road. Is it up to the applicant to realign that road or is that something that we will be doing, plan to be doing?
I think it is. Let me... We have required within the conditions for a minimum provision of five metres along Jubal Road to be dedicated and then provision to realign that within the approvals. So the land, certainly the land component would be a take in terms of who will physically undertake those works. I think that will be part of, that will be answered in part as part of the detailed transport infrastructure and assessment to come as the layout rolls out and as staging patterns are understood, as well as that broader network conversation. So at this point in time and at this level of an approval, what we've said is there is a clear need for a realignment and some land. How that pavement construction rolls through and the intersection configuration, that will be resolved in time.
Okay. And just a follow on question with the Toowoomba Cecil Plains Road. We know how critical that work needs to be done and it's good to see that intersection treatment included in the plans.
Any further questions? Councillor Tim?
Chair, thank you. Good afternoon Ed, Joe, Tim. This is for a change in zoning effectively from rural to low density. In every study we have support certain, the urban footprint and the Toowoomba West land supply, which I didn't know was so detailed. But, well done on that. But it is outside the PIA and we've had a lot of conversation on not all developments outside the PIA are equal. And your comment around if there can be a clear sequential infrastructure use, upgrade, bring forward costs, we're willing to come to the party on that. So the, the conditions, I've read them and you've taken us through them. It lists, should there be a DA, these would be the bring forward costs on the developer for this to happen. And it includes, you know, significant... for this to happen. And it includes, you know, significant infrastructure to wastewater and water network. But there's still the overarching question that if, like you can only do it outside the PIA if it's not going to impact the infrastructure to the houses that are approved within the PIA. And so I suppose the, the only question I have unanswered is if, in really layman's crude terms, if someone were to flush the toilet inside the PIA, it's not going to be clogged because houses outside the PIA are taking all the infrastructure. If that makes sense, you're satisfied.
It is, it is a phenomenal point councillor. I very much appreciate you making it. There are, when we assess development outside of the PIA, it cannot be at the detriment of forecast and projected development within and the augmentations required to infrastructure networks that are within. So what this proposal certainly seeks to take advantage of is latent capacity within the network. It's not sort of pre-allocated, if you will, by virtue of the PIA as well as identifying, well what might need to be brought forward within the program to service you, noting that there are allocations within and that, and that detailed work's been done and ultimately to the satisfaction from the, from the officers at a professional assessment perspective and that, that is the, the very basis of the recommendation before you.
Thank you. Chair, I'm happy to reiterate if there's any further questions.
Councillor Bill has a question?
Just to comment if I may Chair. Look, let me say from the onset that if I were the landowner here, I'd be doing exactly the same. However, in the broader context of the whole western area of Toowoomba and that doughnut area, and you've mentioned the western Toowoomba planning that went on, happened years ago, it's quite concerning that the state have got, or have removed the north-south corridor off their books. It is really concerning. And here is a classic example of it, the issue becoming more complicated when we, through public documents, saw quite clearly that the corridor was right here. And that's going to become more complicated and potentially, well not potentially, more expensive for any level of government to try and deal with the growth both south and north and for where all the expansion's coming in the Toowo, that Toowoomba statistical district. And that's to the west side where all the future jobs are because there's only so many you can put on the east side. That is real concerning and it's concerning for residents on that west side that I personally, is my opinion, would not like to see residents impacted by other proposals for future ease of access to where people will work, where businesses will have logistics, local economy will be impacted. So I would not, I, I'm very concerned and I, I think as a local government, we should be strongly, strongly advocating for that corridor to be, to be put back on the agenda for the benefit of the, not just local but regional economy and accessibility for businesses.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment councillor. Councillor Trevor?
Thanks Chair. Just if this approval is given at this meeting today, is there a date line for that or do they have to come back if they don't do anything?
There's a, thank you councillor, through the chair, there's a 10-year currency period that this approval if given would, would be in effect for.
And part two, the question, when they start building there, obviously there's no access to Jubal Road and there's no access to the Toowoomba Cecil Plains Road. So the access will eventually come through Hersley Road I believe and Divine Road?
So correct councillor, there's no direct lot access. There will need to be an intersection out on Jubal Road to be confirmed in terms of a second entry into the estate. The other intended entry is to take advantage from the existing pattern of development as you see there on the screen, event, effectively coming off Hersley Road.
Any further questions? If not, there has been no word that we, to have any submitters. Nobody is present in that regard, nor is there anyone present from the applicant. So no, if there are no further questions to the officers, I'd ask that somebody move a reinstatement of standing orders. Councillor, Councillor Melissa Taylor and Councillor Carol Taylor. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. So we have a motion that preliminary approval for a material change of use impact variation request to vary the effect of the Toowoomba Regional Planning Scheme 2012 located at 689 Toowoomba Cecil Plains Road, Wellcamp. Is there any requirement to go into debate? If not, I'd ask for Councillor Tim to move the motion. The motion is that councillor approves application number MCUI 2023 1992 for a preliminary approval for a material change of use impact variation request to vary the effect of the Toowoomba Regional Planning Scheme 2012 pursuant to the provisions of section 60 of the Planning Act 2016 and subject to the conditions in attachment three. Is there a seconded, seconded by Councillor Trevor? All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. That concludes the meeting. Thank you.